We ask for wisdom, we ask for abundance and grace, and let us do what's right for the city. Lord, as we think about the frontline caregivers and doctors and nurses, Lord, we ask a special protection for them, and God, in times like this, let us put our differences aside and care for one another and as human beings. God, we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Good prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We are first going to adopt our consent agenda, but I have some additions and deletions. On number six, would you add A, Declaration of a State of Emergency, and make the appointment of the Board of Adjustments the B? Would you delete A, let's see, six, A, little i, two, two, little two, I don't even know how to say that, used to know, and then would you delete on D, the Police Committee, would you delete three? And I believe I have that correct, correct, Mr. Harold? Any others?
Yes, I believe we under, yes.
Did I get the certificates? No, I did not. We need to also delete under C?
Mayor, we are keeping that resolution.
Oh, okay.
The time schedule is just changing, but I recommend you keep that resolution.
Very good, okay, thank you.
Just hold off on the time schedule.
And then that makes sense. Is that, is that all the words?
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda on this side. Motion by Cecil, second, by, I believe Clarence here, and Madam Clerk tonight is our Assistant City Clerk, and Tracy York, and she's going to fill in for Michelle Brown for just a little bit because of other issues. Tracy, would you call the roll?
Yes.
Councilman France?
I'm here.
No, 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 consent agenda. We had, we had a motion and a second.
Yes.
Would you call the roll?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
There we go.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Farm?
Yes.
Super, very good, and the consent agenda is approved, and we do have the chief at the door, and we appreciate that. I want to say just a couple of words here, and then later in the meeting, Mr. Harold will say more to the public about things to expect here at City Hall, and I just want to say, first of all, that the municipal elections on April 7th have been postponed by the Governor to June 2nd, and hopefully all of you are thrilled that I'm going to be your mayor until June, mid-June, and then of course again, Mr. Brown is our mayor-to-be, he's the only one who applied for the job, I love him, and we will continue to be partners in the next three months and work together. It is our intention to reduce numbers at our City Council as much as we can. Obviously, our meetings are open, and there is some guidance that is, has been put out on the Facebook page today concerning the City Councils. We have open meetings, but again, we're trying to discourage large groups of people, and we are, as you can tell, if you can see the audience, we are keeping a distance from each other as much as we can. We intend to conduct business, and we will be doing that even throughout this crisis. As we meet today, I want you to know that the City of Waynesville and our employees and our staff have put together a plan for what the city is doing to address this crisis, and I, in fact, complimented them already tonight, I will do it again. It was a great job, and I think that you've addressed so many of the issues that the Council and I would not have even thought of, and so I appreciate that a lot. Mostly, we're going to be following the state and national guidelines that are given to us by the President, by the Governor, by the Health Department, and we want everybody to be safe. And as mayor, the other thing I would say to the public is look out for the elderly. Keep yourself away from them. And again, that includes me. You know, if you, if you have neighbors that are elderly and they're your friends, even if they're not your friends, if they're elderly that live close to you, you might contact them and see if you could do their shopping for them. Walmart announced today that they are going to have special times for seniors to shop, and so be sure and check that out also. At the end of our meeting tonight, Mr. Harold will be addressing several other issues. So, I gave our people that we're going to honor tonight, I gave them the option of not co, not coming, and I, in fact, where, Tim is not here, but Twila's here, and so Twila, we're going to be very mindful of social distancing, distancing, which I cannot say. So, if you would come up here and let me just say a word about you. I won't even come out there because you know I'd have to hug you, so. And Twila is not only my personal friend, but she is the owner of Cellar 66. She was the, also the builder of Just Because, which is located in the Ruby Duke Plaza. And when I talked about her on Facebook, one of the things that I said was, her investment in that development really kick-started the Ruby Duke Plaza, and so I appreciate everything that you do, Twila. And I won't tell every little thing, you know, Twila's one of those people that just quietly goes about her business. Many of you know her well, and I'm telling the truth. She goes about her business, helping people, donating to things, giving her time, she loves Salvation Army, and she never expects anything for it. And I appreciate her, and I, you didn't bring your proclamation, but I did present her with a proclamation two weeks ago, I believe, and we have been honoring her on our Facebook page, but it says, "For Twila Cordry, to honor your support of our community, for your giving spirit, for your love of downtown Waynesville, and your civic pride, we bestow the title of Good Citizen of Waynesville for the month of March." Twila, I love you. I'm going to give you a key to the city.
Ooh, thank you.
Now, my little joke is, it's awful little, and it doesn't open anything, but that is for you.
That's nice.
And you can wear it on your lapel.
And I will.
And if you would like to say anything to the, to public, really to the public, we're on Facebook.
Twila?
Yes.
Mayor, you know, she's done a lot more than that.
Oh, yes.
Their mortgage company that her and her husband Raymond had, I mean, I became a Realtor in 99, and they were running a business that took care of so many of our citizens, our soldiers, I mean, it goes way beyond that. They made major contributions to all the functions on that installation.
Yes.
Supporting it. There's things that wouldn't have happened throughout our three communities, the military, St. Robert, and the county, that without their support, just wouldn't have happened.
And again, they never expect our recognition for it.
And she served on the council.
Yes, and I, in fact, that was on the Facebook, that she was on City Council, and in fact, Twila is now the Chairman of our Planning and Zoning Commission, so we appreciate everything you've done for, really, your chosen home, much like me, this was our chosen home.
Yes.
And so we appreciate everything that you've done, and Twila, if you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome.
Sure. We love downtown Waynesville, and we want to see it grow. We're going through a little niche right now, I mean, we'll all overcome this. We will be closed for the next couple of weeks. They've given us an option of either serving food to go or clothing, and I think we're going to opt to close. I think it's probably the right thing for us to do for the community, but we do want to make everyone aware that if anyone needs anything as far as food delivered or that type of thing, we do have a lot of food that we could still deliver to them, so don't forget that. And again, we want to make sure that we take care of our seniors, our elderly, so if you know anyone that needs some food, we'll be happy to deliver them sandwiches and that type of thing for free.
How nice of you.
But we love the community, and we'll get through it.
Very good. Thank you, Twila. That's wonderful. And that is why she's Good Citizen of the Month. Okay, I also, in fact, we've had several nominations, haven't we, Amber lately, Maryam, whoever works with, Maryam, I guess, works with the Business Spotlight, and we've had several nominations lately. I believe we've got nominations for like the next five months. So, today, it was Lone Oak Printing, and I'll very quickly say a few things about Lone Oak Printing. Again, we talked about them on Facebook. Lone Oak Printing is Tim and Audra Barrier, her name of course is Barbara now, but that's his daughter, and Lone Oak Printing is owned and sets on the downtown square. I'm going to paraphrase this proclamation. We have a really nice proclamation to give Tim, and again, I thought he was going to be here tonight, so Tracy will have to kind of make sure that he gets that, okay? Lone Oak used to be a crocker, I'm old, so I remember it being in Crawford, and Tim bought that business and brought it to downtown Waynesville. One of the things that I most appreciate about Tim and Audra is that they have turned the downtown district, now on this proclamation it says, into a home away from home. I will tell you that it is Tim who coined the phrase, "Welcome to the neighborhood," and they, in fact, everybody downtown calls downtown Waynesville "the neighborhood." They have supported countless events and gatherings on the square for the last 10 years. It was Audra who worked so diligently in the beginning to offer the festivals downtown, and it was always her that was doing that, I believe with Pam Seda for years, so we appreciate Audra and everything that she did. And then I just want to make one little more statement about Lone Oak. Tim is the one who puts up the veterans banners downtown. He does that program. Of course, the city helps him put them up, but he does that program, and I will tell you, that gets more comments and compliments from people, the fact that we honor our veterans. And the other thing that Tim is involved in right now, and I see that Mr. Marina has left the building, but one of the things that is going to happen here shortly is that he has, Tim has gathered up the money to put a beautiful monument next to the old courthouse, it's going to be in the front, kind of catty-corner from the clock, and it will be a huge 66 emblem. The city is going to help, who's my economic development guy, is it Bill? The city's going to help with the concrete on that, I think it's not very much money, but we're going to help set that, and guys, I'm telling you right now, that's going to be a tourist draw. People are going to want to stop in downtown Waynesville and get their picture made with that beautiful emblem. So, my compliments to Tim, and I'm waiting with bated breath to see that. I think it's going to be wonderful. So, congratulations to Lone Oak Printing.
You know, Mayor, this would be a good time also to get that 66 painted on those three sides of the square.
And we had talked about that, and I think we, John, we kind of put that off because you were going to look at turning the square one way, and so I didn't want to do anything until that was determined. I think that if we do one way around the square, those placements of those emblems will be, should be in a certain place, so I'll just throw that out, okay? But we do have the man who said he will do that for us. We also had on our agenda, guys, Dorsey Newcomb, and he is not here tonight. Bruce, would you want to just say a word here about our handout from the SOP?
Sure, we got a handout from Dorsey talking about, you know, the accomplishments of the Sustainable Ozarks Partnership. I'll just highlight a few. One of the things that has been providing us with information about the, about the virus outbreak from the federal and state sources, they're helping the cities there, they're advocating for state legislation that was initiated by Representative Lynch, and I think that's, that's been working good. They participated in the Association of Defense Communities with Mayor Hartman in promoting our region. They've been working a lot with our airport and with Conter to, you know, look ways to increase the ridership in our areas, and we're going to be working with him in the near future for a defense community infrastructure program, we're probably, we're looking to submit a grant for our area for that program. So, that's just a few of the highlights.
Very good, and a couple of things working right now with the SOP that we'll discuss later through the medium. So, any questions for Mr. Harold? All right, Board and Commission reports, Lawrence is in the audience. Lawrence, come up, and I see one of your members is here, Amanda Corn is in the office, in the audience also.
I put them all to stay home, but she's kind of stuck.
Well, she likes this. I think she likes this, don't you, Amanda? In fact, the last time she was here, she stayed the whole meeting, we didn't bore her anything, so.
Yeah, well, I was getting ready to leave that meeting, and she made me stay.
So, Lawrence talked to us about the park board, and can I say, can I say something before you get started? And I wrote this down before I realized I was going to be mayor for a few more months, but I really don't want us to forget the lady that came and talked to us about Winter Creeper.
Uh, yeah, she, she wants to be on the park board if the chair comes up. She, she wants to be in Val.
Does she live in Waynesville?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't think she did, very good.
She is currently in the process of.
Tell the new mayor that, too. Very good, very good. Okay, go ahead.
That's true. Okay, I'm going to be skipping over the minutes, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, and then I'm going to start giving updates on some things after that. We had, we had Councilman Curtis start us off with a prayer, which we have way appreciated. We had a forum, and we voted in two things. We voted in, of course, the minutes with one change from, oh, that's from Jan, we voted in, I'm still looking at this. Anyway, it said November, and we voted in the January minutes, instead of the November minutes. In other words, one word was wrong, okay? And the other thing we voted on, we had a big discussion that we're going to start our meetings off similar to the City Council, we're going to start with a prayer, and it pleads the allegiance. Now, it was unanimous.
Sure.
And I thought that'd be the right thing to do. I'm going to go ahead and go on to the basket gardens. I guess some of you folks have already seen the new sign up there, and it really looks good. If you haven't, you got pictures of it. Should have. And they've already done their planting for summer, spring. They did the 156 exit also. The Summit Park is pretty much complete now. They're use, well, they can, not today though, but they can use the new equipment that's up there, gravel, and, let's see. I want to go ahead and go right into the updates. On first update I want to do, of course, is going to be park superintendent. I've been staying away from Trey because he has his handful, so I'm thinking there's a man sitting right there that can go ahead and give us an update of what's going on since last week, if he would help us out, Bruce.
Okay, I think, as, as he mentioned in his report, he's done a lot of his maintenance on his equipment, getting ready for the season. He's, you know, they've repaired a lot of their picnic tables. I think he's put some pea gravel in the Summit Playground, and he's almost completed there. He evacuated the RV Park today due to rising water, so that's, and I think he's repaired a lot of those barbecue pot. Yeah, barbecue, he's repaired a lot of those barbecue grills.
Right.
So, that's some of the things he's been up to.
Yeah, but what's the, what's the whole thing on the RV, you know, taking out, did you already get the bathrooms out?
The RV, he told me today, the RV Park has been evacuated. It was 11 feet at Play-Doh, and that water was coming down here. It takes about eight feet to, you know, cause a situation in our park, so he evacuated it this afternoon.
Okay. I hope it was okay I didn't bother him.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
You can start bothering him, well, probably wait till the virus thing's over, then start bothering him.
Well, I want, I want to get as close to updating as possible.
I, I was going to make a point now, be sure the dog park installation is postponed until the new mayor's in place. Feel free to start.
Yeah, well, that's not up to me, there's lots of people that handle the money, so.
Okay, feel free to start.
Yeah, and that, that will be taken care of by the bosses.
Good timing, all right.
The WSR updates, the spring sports seasons will be postponed to 1 May. Start games will begin May 16th and concluding 18th of July. Because of the push and, and the loss of the spring sports, volleyball is canceled, summer baseball is canceled, and softball is canceled. I haven't had an update for the last two days. I don't know if anything's changed from there, Bruce.
No updates at the current time. We hope to be able to start the soccer season May 1st, you know, provided everything is, is better by then. There's possibility that we may have to change that, too, but we're, we're waiting to see how things develop.
Right. And I'm going to go a little off of the park boards, the agendas, and I might report as of this morning, BMWs are being shut down. No steak night, and I apologize for that, but I got that report this morning. All the perishables they have are being donated to the senior citizen program up on the hill.
Which, which pathway is open for food? You can't go in and congregate, but the people can drive up and get food.
Yeah, I talked to Joseph King, she said if they still, or they come by and pick it up. Right. And I'm talking to her this morning also.
Sounds like steak dinner at the seniors' house.
No, those are frozen. They're not, they're not cooked then frozen, frozen before cooked. You know, they get all the perishables if they wish to have it, because they do salads and stuff like that, so. And that's basically all I've got. Other than our meeting, it's up in the air right now how we're going to do it. We're just going to have to feel that one through. Right now, I'd like to do it here, but we'll be talking to the mayor.
Yes, and I, and I think Bruce has kind of talked to all of us about limiting our meetings unless there's a need for it. Would you say that's proper for park board, too?
Yes, that is true.
So, and, you know, if you don't have any business, if there's, you know, maybe you would skip.
That was my original plan, if no business comes up, that we haven't have, I'll get the reports and I'll give them posted.
And as far as I'm concerned, you're welcome to have it in here until you spread out, if you have to have one. Is that okay, Bruce?
Yes, certainly.
Okay.
As it stands for now.
Lawrence, I would say that this is not official yet, but I would fully expect the egg hunt to be canceled also.
I heard something about.
American Legion.
Yeah.
And I know that's not your, maybe we.
Yeah, I know, but I, I get in on some of those discussions. I've gone and talked to three straight days.
Okay, so that, that's not official.
Yeah.
But everybody be alert to.
It depends on what district, because it's just like BMW didn't even know it until this morning.
Yeah, but there's a lot of people involved in the egg hunt, and of course, we're trying to get away from that, so, just a heads up. Okay, thank you, Lawrence.
Thank you. Any questions?
Appreciate it. Any questions for Lawrence? Any questions for Amanda?
Yeah, yeah, any questions for the real.
She shouldn't have put that in there. Okay, planning and zoning, we didn't have a meeting this month?
No, it's short.
Of course, I was in Florida, so I, I would have missed it anyway. Do you have anything there that needs to be said, Bruce?
No, no, Mayor.
We have our Standing Committee meetings, Councilman France, Roads and Grounds.
I called meeting to order at 4:30 on March 5th. We had our forum, there were no citizens present to bring up any points. We're looking at the annexation of additional industrial park land, that's the 100 acres that we purchased recently, but you've got to have a public hearing on it, so that'll be coming before the Council in the future. 2020 major projects, everybody was given a handout of those projects previously, but one of the things is the street overlay and repair priority listing that the committee has been given for review. Brian Adams proposed changes to that list and suggested paving smaller streets first and do bigger streets later. That's coming back to the committee next month. The update on Old Pharma Estates, the committee reviewed the minutes from the August 2nd, 2012 Roads and Grounds Committee meeting, and the state, that state, the committee reviewed the acceptance of the road as is and would be mostly for snow removal. Chairman France, I have requested that Brian take a look at the roads and bring back his views at our next meeting. Street Department update, Brian Adams stated, "The Street Department has worked on 12 work order surveying of sidewalks, hauling rock to the industrial park, and working on putting in sewer lines out there, graded roads, cleaned out ditches, two utility cuts, haul trees away from the park, and if you take a look at some of the utility cuts throughout the various neighborhoods, you'll see where they painted them, kind of where they're going to re-cut them and repair those as we get the right kind of asphalt, and some of them happen to have the road beds under them repaired prior to, because they've become, kind of gone away." There was a need for a closed session, we entered, entered closed session at 4:58, and we came out at 5:12, there being no further business, we adjourned.
Very good. Any questions for Mike? And again, we have discussed internally that because of what's going on, we are going to be careful with our spending, and so that may impact our roads and grounds and various things, so just a heads up for that. Utilities, Councilman France, keep talking.
I carry, called that meeting to order on March 3rd at 3:30. Proposed ordinance regulating propane services in the city, establishing safety regulations regarding the installation of liquid propane gas tanks within city limits of Waynesville, along with changes to include safety requirements and city sales tax per the municipal code of the City of Waynesville is coming up. I had requested that the company that we started with St. Robert and the Glass County Sewer District Co., USA, that we would get an update, and so Bruce provided the committee with an update on what's going on with that entity. SCADA, SCADA, we had a proposed amendment to the 2020 budget, which should be great news for the city, and that is because our original thoughts was, it was going to, we budgeted $184,000 for it, and we geared it at $80,000. So, we're saving $104,000 for the city.
Nice.
Proposed revision to the solid waste permitting regulations, we're still looking at that. Proposed natural gas agreement with the City of Richmond will be addressing that, and you had in your packet a copy of it. Department Updates, Gas Department, they're conducting their annual walking of the line and doing valve checks. They replaced a gas meter at the McDonald's and have been replacing a few regulators. The wastewater department, six fire hydrants have been flushed, jetted out two sewer lines, currently installing SCADA systems, and CMOM notices are going in. CMOM, smoke testing of our manholes to work on infiltration of stormwater into our sewer system. Electric Department, Mr. Sheldon stated, "His department had two power outages, five street lights, two miscellaneous, cut down and cleaned up several trees in the backside of the park. A few ride down the road beneath the street, and then turn out like you're going over towards sewer plant, and you'll see a whole bunch of trees been taken out that were in bad shape and also obstructing electric service. They've also put in the poles to remove overhead wires from over top of our playgrounds in that area, so they've got those poles in, but they'll be pulling wire and hooking them up as weather and time permits. Also finished work on the, well, and clearing, and wave clearing has begun with B and M, which you've already heard. We're going to kind of suspend some of these actions. A motion was made by Councilman Wilson, Wilson, to go into closed session at 4:09. Motion carried. We came out of that at 4:32. Next meeting is scheduled. Uh, next meeting is scheduled for the April seventh at three thirty.
Very good. Questions for Mike?
I have one other thing.
Yes.
And that is, uh, with, uh, what's going on with the coronavirus. If you have any of the citizens, in lieu of coming to the meeting, if you would call either Mr. Harold or Mr. John Doyle and give them your points that, uh, you have interest in, and they will address the committee in support of you.
Very good. And I believe that came out in our announcements today.
Yes.
Yes, so.
Uh, we have a couple ordinances.
Yes, we do, but you can read the announcement on Facebook page, and it does talk about how to get ahold of the city council as well as the committees. And Mr. Muxlow is not with us tonight, and John is gonna continue his effort at doing the second readings, or the two readings. And so we do have two ordinances. The first one is ordinance twenty-four oh seven, Mr. Doyle.
Ordinance number twenty-four oh seven, an ordinance approving an agreement between the city of Waynesville and city of Richland, relating to natural gas fixing and effective date. Ordinance number twenty-four oh seven, an ordinance approving an agreement between the city of Waynesville and city of Richland, relating to natural gas fixing and effective date.
Very good, I entertain a motion on this side.
Motion.
Mike Curtis on this side a second, Mr. France down here, and I believe we've talked about this for several months. Do you have anything else to say?
No, Mayor, unless there's any questions.
Okay. Again, this is something we've addressed for several months. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Parnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that ordinance passes. We have ordinance twenty-four oh eight that has to do with propane tanks within the city. Mr. Doyle.
Ordinance number twenty-four oh eight, an ordinance establishing safety regulations regarding the installation of liquid propane gas tanks within the city limits of the city of Waynesville, fixing and effective date. Ordinance number twenty-four oh eight, an ordinance establishing safety regulations regarding the installation of liquid propane gas tanks within the city limits of the city of Waynesville, fixing and effective date.
Very good, I entertain a motion. Let's give Ed Conley for a motion, any seconds, Mr. Wilson. And I would just say right off the bat that I know this is, uh, something that some people were very interested in, but about, uh, was it last month, we discussed this a little bit, and one of the things that I brought up was, remember the flood of twenty thirteen? When that flood picked up propane tanks and deposited them at the city hall? And when I showed up that morning, that's all you could smell. And so we have been looking at safety of, uh, propane tanks, and this is what it addresses. Mr. Harold, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am, I think that covers it, Mayor, do you have any questions?
Okay.
I've got one, Bruce.
Yes.
I noticed that in our ordinance, it says five hundred gallons would be the capacity. What if somebody has a thousand gallon tank already on their property?
Uh, basically, this, this allows us for them to continue using those, uh, over tanks, uh, basically, the, it allows, it allows them to continue the use of those.
And it says that in the next sentence.
Yes.
Yeah, in section two at the bottom.
Yes.
Uh, another thing, are we gonna pass this off to make sure that, uh, the local propane companies have, have this ordinance on them? Because it also directs them in certain areas that they're gonna have to do some work for the installation and tying down of those tanks.
Yes, and we've all, uh, of course, Mr. Doyle's already talked to some of those propane companies, but we'll talk to the other ones. And, uh, you'll notice that we put this in full force and effect July first, twenty twenty. So, it gives them a little bit of time to work on that if they need to, so, so that gives them several months to, to work out if they need to install meters or some type of other activity.
Yeah, Whole, Whole Valley had propane tanks floating through the backyards with gas spewing, uh, back in thirteen.
I don't think they put it in those flood cells, most of it is.
It is.
Anything else? Any questions? Madam Clerk, would you take the roll?
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yeah.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Parnum?
Yes.
And that ordinance passes. We have Finance Committee, uh, Councilman Liberty, and I believe he has several ordinances.
Meeting was called to order at five P.M. on March twelfth. We reviewed the bills and, uh, we voted to approve the bill, payment of the bill. Mr. Harold reported to committee that as of this date, we had three point seven million in city bank account. Discussion on proposed ordinance amending the city Waynesville employee manual regarding general pro- provisions of employment. Mr. Harold reviewed the proposed ordinance with committee members. He stated that adding Title Six and Title Nine verbiage to the personnel manual policy was recommended by Merman to implement immediately. There was also discussion regarding the use of personal cell phones in the workplace. Mr. Harold reviewed the proposed ordinance with the committee members, and he stated, recommended by Merman to implement immediately due to safety factors involved. All committee members are unanimous in wanting the city administrator to be able to enforce the consequences laid out in this ordinance. Vote was called and it was approved, proposed resolution authorizing offering the sale of certificates of participation. Mr. Harold stated need for closed session for legal personnel and real estate in accordance with RSMO six ten dash zero two one, one, two, and three. Vote was called at five fourteen, went into closed session, came back out of closed session into regular session at five thirty-eight. There being no other business to come before the committee, I adjourn the committee, and the next meeting will be held on April ninth, two thousand twenty.
Very good. And questions for Clarence? Again, we do have several ordinances relating to personnel matter, matters mostly, and then the sale of our C, C, COPs. Uh, so, first one is ordinance twenty-four oh nine, amending the personnel manual. Mr. Doyle.
Ordinance number twenty-four oh nine, an ordinance amending the city of Waynesville's employee personnel manual regarding general provisions of employment, fixing and effective date. Ordinance number twenty-four oh nine, an ordinance amending the city of Waynesville's employee personnel manual regarding general provisions of employment, fixing and effective date.
Very good, I entertain a motion over here on this side for this amendment. Cecil, second by Clarence. Uh, Mr. Harold, before we vote here, of course, uh, I, I take this to mean it's just general things that we needed to update.
Yes, Mayor, many of these things were in our personnel policy, but we clearly stated, uh, it was Title Nine of the Educational Amendments Act of nineteen seventy-eight, the Title Seven of the Civil Rights Act, uh, rewording some of our equal opportunity employment and recruitment policy. Basically, things we had in our policy, we're just fine tuning it and making sure it's up to date.
Very good, are there any other questions? And we have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Parnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yeah.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Very good, that ordinance passes, and can I pause for just a moment and say that I have received, uh, a message on Facebook here asking why we're having this meeting, and why are we not quarantined, uh, to ten people? And here's my response. We are bare bones here tonight. If there are people in the audience, they are sitting far apart from each other. We are doing everything we can to safeguard our people, but I will just say that, I'm sure every city is the same way, we're gonna do business, we have to do business. And we are, I think, all of us very mindful of each other, and we are not doing the things that we usually do. And so, we have also, throughout our city hall, disinfected everything. Our counter has been disinfected, it will be disinfected after we leave. Uh, we, we are very mindful of what's going on, but I will just say, we're going to do business. We have proposed ordinance twenty-four ten, this has to do with cell phones, Mr. Doyle.
Ordinance number twenty-four ten, an ordinance amending the city of Waynesville employee personnel manual regarding the use of personnel cell phones in the workplace, fixing and effective date. Ordinance number twenty-four ten, an ordinance amending the city of Waynesville employee personnel manual regarding the use of personnel cell phones in the workplace, fixing and effective date.
Very good, a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Clarence, a second by Bill, and are there any questions about this?
Yes.
I believe we all read it, Mr. Brown, Dr. Brown?
On the second page, employees may utilize their cell phones and stream music at their personal workstation. Why do we need that? If they're at their station, they should be working, not listening to music.
Okay, let me find that again.
On the second page, employees may utilize their cell phones and stream music at their personal workstation as long as the device is kept out of view.
Some of the employees do like to listen, uh, to music, uh, which they have at a soft, uh, version at their, at their workstation, it's kind of, you know, it, uh, I, I guess they find it relaxing. Uh, and we, we permitted that in the past, but if that's a concern, we can, we can, we can, we can address that, uh.
I think, I think.
I'll tell you, I have a job where I sit at a computer all day. I completely agree with the use of music at work.
Absolutely, I've seen people be very productive with the music.
Well, and I would say in our office that we've even had a time where we had a player, uh, that played soft music, and it was done softly, this is not something that's gonna disturb anybody, Dr. Brown.
We'll, we'll make sure that it's, if you pass it, we'll make sure that, that does not disturb, uh, other employees.
Sit back there and listen to your rock and roll and just.
No.
We agree with you, we don't want that either. We do not want that either, we want them to be working.
Uh, I had a couple issues, one is the very last line on page two where it says, phones should be kept out of the direct view of the public. If we're using them, I mean, when we're conducting business, I just thought it was kind of, you know, hiding something, uh, it just didn't seem right to me when you read that whole thing, uh, let's.
If you want that omitted, we can omit that, we can just say phones.
Well, there's only one council person.
Should be set on vibrate or turned off.
But I just, you know.
We're just, uh, we're just trying to keep the work area basically kind of clear for work. But if, if that's a problem, we can omit that line and just say, phones should be, uh, set on vibrate or turned off. So, you know, I don't think we.
I don't mean to be contentious, but I will just tell you this, if I'm writing something to somebody on an email or a text, I don't want everybody to be able to read it. And maybe there are things with the city that you wouldn't want the public to be able to look down and see. Now, to me, that's all that meant.
Yeah, I, I just think, you know, it's out of the view of the public, it doesn't mean that you're hiding anything, it just means it's a personal cell phone. Well, you know, our police officers, if you watch them, they'll be driving around with their cell phone right up next to their head, they're driving. There's sections specifically in their. So, I took it as, you know, we're, we're just gonna kind of keep it on the down low that we're still doing something like that.
There's a section.
There's a section. On the next page, my, my, I have a problem with where it's, uh, we're telling people not to do it, they gotta stop if they're in a city vehicle and stuff like this, and then we tell the police officers. I think we gotta put out a maximum effort to get radios that our officers can use that are consistent, and they can maintain great communications on, uh, because, uh, that's a lawsuit waiting to happen. I mean, that's the first thing they pull up, you hear it on TV every day, where they pulled the cell phone, found that he sent texts, found that they talked.
What we're currently researching is maybe hands-free devices for them, so I would prefer that.
Bluetooth.
Uh, you know, they've used radios in the past, and somehow, you know, the technology has kind of moved on from that, and I'm not saying we can't go back to that. Uh, we, we can look at that, but, uh, the current thing we're look, we're trying to emphasize is maybe using hands-free devices. So, I, I prefer to research that first, not saying we can't go back to radios, but, uh.
I'd, I'd say the radio technology is definitely outdated, go to hands-free. I, I don't have a problem, I'm just saying, I think we need to put a maximum effort on getting something done so we're not utilizing cell phones to conduct, especially for our police people.
So, I remember.
And we've discussed that in the committee meeting, and Mr. Harold stated that he would research for hands-free cell phones.
And so let me say one thing too, when we first started talking about texting and using your phone, you know, for teenagers and whatever, I brought up to Chief, uh, Cordova, and he's left, but I brought up to him, um, will you please serve on the phone? Many times, that's how they are communicating with each other. And it's, I, I, I told him, I said, well, I don't want them talking to their wives, you know, unless it's emergency. Uh, that kind of thing, the public sees it, and they think, oh, he's talking to his wife. Well, that's not true.
No.
He's talking to other officers, and so I just think, like Bruce said, we are going to look into Bluetooth and have it in their ears, that way they're not doing this, okay? So, is everybody all right with that, if that's?
Whatever, of course, I just don't want, you know, because it's proven, you know.
I know.
Cell phone use is not safe, no matter how you do it. Wild drive. Wild drive.
Yes, sir.
You know.
But if you're a policeman, and that's the only communication you have, I want them to be able to know where my house is, okay? So, again, I think, is everybody happy with what Mr. Harold said, that they, we're looking into the?
Yes, yes.
Hands-free. Okay, any other questions? That was turned into an interesting discussion. Anything else? All right, and we have a motion and a second, and Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yeah.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Parnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, that ordinance passes, and believe it or not, John, we have another one. This is or, proposed ordinance, or, I'm sorry, resolution, and therefore, you don't have to read it. This is proposed resolution twenty twenty oh one, this is our first one, Bruce.
Mm-hmm.
Wow, really? So, I get to read it. A resolution authorizing the offering of sale of certificates of deposit. City of Waynesville, less E, series twenty twenty, fixing and effective date. I believe I only have to read it once.
And that's. You said deposit, this is participation.
Oh, I apologize. Certificates of participation. I have CDs, sorry. Okay, uh, is everybody all right with how I read that?
Yes.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Cecil?
Second.
Second by Jerry here, Dr. Brown, and any questions? I believe we've already discussed this also in the executive session. Miss, uh, let's see, anything to add, Mr. Harold?
No, Mayor, unless you have any questions.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
That's a resolution.
I think you can all vote, uh.
Oh.
Michelle thought you would have to have a vote on this.
Simply because you want to make a record?
No, I don't know.
Okay, let's go ahead and do it, go ahead.
Councilman Parnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yeah.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman France?
You bet.
Okay, and that ordinance passes. Guys, we have the police committee with Councilman Liberty, Clarence?
Meeting was called to order at three thirty. Uh, there was ATV usage on city streets was discussed, and it is gonna be tabled at this time to give our attorney an opportunity to go through it more. Signal in a traffic circle, uh, we discussed that. It was voted on, I opposed it, I also recommend we strike it from the ordinance. Also, police updates, Chief Cordova to discuss two grants that the police department applied for. One grant in the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight for hazardous moving violation enforcement. The second grant in the amount of twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars for DWI saturation enforcement. There was a need for closed session, a vote was taken, we went into closed session at four ten P.M. Return to open session at four thirty P.M. Having no further business, I adjourn the meeting at four thirty. Next scheduled meeting will be April second, two thousand twenty, at three thirty.
Very good, and any questions for Clarence? All right. All right. We, moving along, we do have an ordinance that involves vehicle turning movements. And I also see, Chief Cordova, do you have Mr. Officer Moore with you?
He just stepped out.
Okay, I thought you were going to introduce him. Of course, Brian Moore has joined our.
We'll bring him back over.
Okay, thank you. All right. This is ordinance twenty-four-eleven. Mr. Doyle?
Ordinance number twenty-four-eleven. An ordinance amending chapter three-fifteen of the Municipal Code of the City of Waynesville regarding vehicle turning movements, fixing an effective date. Ordinance number twenty-four-eleven. An ordinance amending chapter three-fifteen of the Municipal Code of the City of Waynesville regarding vehicle turning movements, fixing an effective date.
Very good. I entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
My friends. Strictly from the.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Mike France was first here, so I'll take his, his motion second. Clarence Liberty. And then we do have some discussion. And Mr. Harold, would you like to start out the discussion, and then we have some questions?
Okay, I think that we are recommending that you update our code on the vehicle turning moments, movements. I believe that, I believe the majority of the discussion, as I anticipate, could be about item D, which is requiring drivers in a roundabout to give the appropriate signal. Uh, there's concern about that. I know our roundabout is really small. Uh, this action is, is basically supported from the Missouri Driver's Handbook, but I know it is controversial due to the fact that a roundabout is rather small. And by the time you, you have to put your signal on as soon as you entered it to, I guess, get to about the hundred feet distance that's stated in this ordinance. So I know that is part of the controversy, and I'll just kind of leave it there and let the councilmen state their viewpoints.
I believe Clarence, who wanted to mention that first? Clarence?
Mr. Harold covered it well. I just don't believe it's practical for the people to attempt to turn on a turn signal. One reason is, as Mr. Harold said, the hundred foot. The other reason is, when you're going from Highway seventeen to Highway seventeen, you are not turning.
Correct.
That's all I have.
Okay. Ed?
I originally supported that particular section. I find it very easy to signal going to do that. I intend to continue doing that.
Me too.
But I believe Mike's original motion was to strike that section from the ordinance. And I've had several phone calls and several people that have approached me saying that it's basically unneeded and overreach of government authorities.
Okay.
So I would recommend it be strictly.
Okay. Any comments on this side or questions?
I was going to kind of mirror what Ed just said. I think it should be strictly until the attorney can do their research. If you pass the rest of the ordinance, I believe that.
I.
Cecil?
I personally have a difficulty passing the ordinance as a whole, regardless of D or anything like that. I don't think that there's anything in this ordinance that you cannot already do as a police officer. Pull somebody over for failure to turn, put a turn signal on. We've got in here the right-hand and arm signals. Those are covered by the Missouri Manual. Those are taught to people. It's also in the motorcycle. I don't, I just think this is a overreach redundancy of government myself.
No, we're amending what's already there.
Actually, sometimes our ordinances, we may have passed them years ago. The state law changes. I know what you're saying.
Yeah, but the state law hasn't changed on how far you signal left or right, or where you signal here, or driving in the left-hand turn lane.
And our city clerk's not here, but she researched this and, and said that, you know, our ordinance was out of date and we needed to update it. It's a typical thing we do from time to time.
The whole reason it was brought up is a lot of people are using our turning lanes as, as continuing lanes.
Yes.
And that was one of the main issues, and I think that's why we wanted to add it to our city ordinance, maybe to.
But it's already.
We, we did that last month.
But it's already a final defense by state law.
Actually, I think the, the committee did want to change that item.
Because we do have.
They wanted to lower it to a hundred feet from five hundred feet.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So there is a major change in this ordinance.
If the state says five hundred feet, ours, we're talking a hundred feet, right?
Because you could actually go five hundred feet and block the whole lane on down after Avenue or quite a bit.
And that's where the issue's at.
That is one of the problems, yes.
And, and can I say, I understand what Cecil is saying, but everybody, we've all been city council people. We always are updating our ordinances to go with state statutes, and to me, that's what this is. It's simply an update.
Exactly.
But, but again, a state statute is five hundred feet.
And we're changing it.
To a hundred feet. A hundred feet is within a five hundred foot parameter. So let's say, I believe we have our traffic officer in the back right now. So if a traffic officer sees somebody driving down a left-hand turn lane five hundred feet, it's still a final offense. Or it's a hundred feet, it's a final offense. I just, I just think we're.
Only if it's in the ordinance is a hundred feet.
Yeah, the state doesn't require a hundred feet.
That turn lane, and I've seen it for years, ever since they put it in as a merge lane or passing lane, and that's very dangerous. Something needs to be done about it.
I guarantee you pass out a couple of tickets to people.
Can I say though, we already did that. Didn't we do that last month? Didn't we get rid of the driving down the middle lane?
No, ma'am, I think this is the ordinance right here. We've talked about it. I think this is the ordinance right here.
Okay. So here's the chief of police.
Okay.
Okay, the chief. I didn't ask the chief about the roundabout, but the chief would support us passing this ordinance. He believes it would, would help him. Specifically about driving in the turn, uh, the driving lane, the turn lane.
Yes, sir.
Would it be a, okay. I understand you're interested in a hundred-foot distance, right, chief?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we can always do more research and take it back to committee at the discretion of the, of the city council. We, we are recommending, and I understand we don't want to overreach or be redundant. I understand that, that we are recommending from the staff point of view, pass the ordinance. It's up to you whether you want to have, you know, that other section in, you know, that's, we'll, we'll leave that to, to, to the mayor and city council.
Well, I, I mean, I can ask chief, what exactly is in here that you cannot already do?
What we want to do, right now, what we're having the issue with, especially with the construction at the middle school, that middle lane is routinely being used to pass, and what we're trying to avoid is head-on collision when somebody comes out of any of the, any of the side streets or any of the residences, because there, remember, there's already going to be a car in the regular lane. Now there's going to be a car in the middle lane, and the car in the middle lane is usually going faster than the regular traffic. So when they pull out thinking they're clear, there's, they're going to meet head-on.
Well, my, my question is, and I guess that's my biggest question, does it require an ordinance for you to enforce it that way?
Five hundred feet is a long distance.
Five hundred feet is a long distance, but.
It virtually gives us no teeth, because that is not a extraordinarily long section. We're just trying to keep, it, it's a safety deal. We're just trying to keep folks from ending up in a head-on collision because they couldn't see, let's say a boxcar is in the road. And there, somebody's passing a boxcar or a bus, because that's what's going on right now. It's the buses. The buses are blocking the view. As the buses are going down the lane, they're going slow, they're going stuck in traffic. People are going to try to pass them to make that left up there on the other road coming up. We just don't want a head-on collision, that's all.
And, and I get it. I drive through there every single.
We don't issue a lot of citations. We have not for those, for that offense. We just haven't. But we'd like to if we need to, if we get something dangerous or if we see something.
Go ahead.
No, I'm good. Say go ahead.
I've seen several close calls by them doing, using it as a passing or merge lane. Uh, a hundred feet, I think, is very reasonable. Five hundred feet, in my opinion, is dangerous. There's too many opportunities for accidents with all the side streets and such.
And it's not, like I said, it's not something that we're, we're hammering.
And go directly to the middle lane because I'm going to turn off at Summit. Very much. I don't do that. But I believe that at five hundred feet, I probably could. I can get out and measure it. Come from the Taco Bell area all the way up to the stoplight.
Right enough.
I mean, at five hundred feet, you're measuring.
That's what he's saying.
Going in that center lane of traffic. Oh, is that? It's dangerous.
So.
I feel probably you ain't going to convince me.
Okay.
I'm talking from experience.
I think what we need to do, first of all, is address the traffic circle. And I don't have a vote. I'm the mayor, but I don't have a vote. Uh, I said at the committee meeting, though, that I did not favor turning in the, in our roundabout, because it is so little. Uh, you know, we don't have a traffic circle, like you see in Branson and Lebanon and Raula.
You go to Raula, the very first one, exit eighty-four, is a two-lane.
Right. That's a traffic circle.
Sergeant Hedrick from the State Police, because I stopped him at, at having coffee with him, because he didn't use a signal coming through ours. The very first day after the police committee, and he basically said, it's too short. He says it's really intended for multi-lane roundabouts, and I said.
And however, however, class, however, I am also, like Ed, I signal in the roundabout. If somebody's sitting over here waiting to come through from downtown, I put my blinker on right to let them know I'm going downtown. It's just common courtesy to me, and I will continue to do that. So I would favor very much taking out D. And if that's what you would like to do, I would entertain another motion. Is that correct?
The, Mike's original motion was to delete.
Okay, I talked over it then because I didn't hear it.
Yeah. My motion was to approve with the exception of the removal of item D.
Okay, and then who seconded?
I seconded.
Somebody did, though.
Somebody already did.
Clarence did. Clarence already did, correct? All right, so that is our motion to remove
D.
D, which would involve the roundabout. So I already have a motion. I have a second. And any more discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
And Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
That ordinance passes. And before we leave the police, Mr. Chief Cordova, would you like to introduce our new officer? Who's not very new to some of us.
I'd like to reintroduce Brian Moore. Brian has returned to us and has been doing a fantastic job. He's pretty good at funky drum rappers out there. He comes to us with seven years prior experience here, and he went overseas for a little bit. And now he's back with us and we're very happy with him.
Very good. I'm thrilled too. Of course, you're my.
Nice to see you back, Officer Moore.
My old student there, so that's wonderful. And have we met Cory?
If you haven't met Cory, this is Cory Moore. Cory Moore was our dispatcher for several years. Went through the Glacier Academy. Less than a year ago, he hit the road for us.
Very good.
One of our full-time officers and did a great job.
Very good. We're glad to have both you gentlemen.
Thank you both.
Thank you both. Okay, moving on to the airport. Sean?
February twenty-fifth at three P.M., the chairman, Mayor Larson, he, he called the, the meeting to order. The minutes from the prior meeting was approved, and the motion was passed accepting those minutes. As far as administration is concerned, Mr. Harold stated the cash flow was a challenge, and the proceeds from the grant monies of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, um, with a grant overlay being about nine hundred and forty-three thousand. Um, at this time, we're waiting on a hundred thousand dollars grant reimbursement from MoDOT for the parallel taxiway terminal modifications. Um, also, with regard to the airport operations manager, the fuel cells were down below this, this, uh, at this time because of weather, and also there was a snowplow truck that was ordered. Now, as far as new business, Contour Airlines had shared some information that was very good for the community. The interline agreement has been successful, and since the interline agreement has taken effect, there has been a twenty-seven percent increase in booking. Um, also, uh, the Contour Airlines will be establishing an aircraft based at the Indianapolis International Airport and launch three new domestic routes.
Very good.
Uh, moving on to the parallel taxiway. Mr. Harold went over a proposed agreement under the review of the joint use of the parallel taxiway and recommendations, sending both cities approval. And I believe we're going to have a, a ordinance pertaining to that. Passage, passage terminal expansion. Um, there has been a final change order number five for the passage ter- terminal. This is the final change order for an increase in a construction contract of ten thousand, ten thousand dollars, a little over ten thousand dollars, and for a total contract of a little over forty, four hundred and forty thousand dollars. This has already been approved and sent to MoDOT. Proposed change order for the sustainment, sustainable modular management. There is a proposed change order for the sustainable modular management for the, for the extra cost of remobilization fees for new setup. It's due to, to site readiness and other additional items. As far as the upgrade to the QT pod, self-serve fuel terminal, there was a, a motion to upgrade the system, and it was approved and the motion was passed, so we'll get a upgrade of that, that system. SOP marketing report, Dorsey Newcomb, um, he stated that there was a revise of their organic, the media strategy, they're going to focus more on the military, so we will see more posts from the military, guided towards the military and information about Fort Leonard Wood and flying into Fort Leonard Wood. Um, he also stated that we'll be focusing some of their marketing on a new potential flight to Indianapolis without changing planes. The meeting, we went into a closed session at about three forty-six. We were out at three forty-five-eight. And we adjourned at three fifty-eight. The next meeting was scheduled for March twenty-fourth, but that has since been canceled. The, the next meeting for the airport board will be April twenty-eighth, and it'll be here at Waynesville at three P.M.
Okay, very good. Questions for Sean? Okay, we do have ordinance twenty-four thirteen concerning the, uh, parallel taxiway, I believe. Mr. Doyle?
Ordinance number twenty-four thirteen, and ordinance amending ordinance number twelve-eighty-six authorizing the mayor of the City of Waynesville to execute supplemental agreement number one to the joint use agreement of Forney Army Airfield between the City of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, and the United States Secretary of the Army, fixing an effective date. Ordinance number twenty-four thirteen, and ordinance amending ordinance number twelve-eighty-six authorizing the mayor of the City of Waynesville to execute supplemental agreement number one to the joint use agreement of Forney Air, Army Airfield between the City of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, and the United States Secretary of the Army, fixing an effective date.
Very good. I entertain a motion by Sean. Second, second by Ed. And anything you want to add to this, Mr. Harold? Again, we talked about this in closed session.
Yes, for the general public, this basically identifies the maintenance responsibility for the parallel taxiway. So we're partnering with Fort Leonard Wood. They're going to take care of some of the responsibilities, and we'll take care of other, additional, other responsibilities. So it's kind of a shared partnership agreement between all parties.
Very good. Any questions? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Thank you.
That ordinance is passed. And we have our last committee meeting as economic development. Bill?
I'm going to be short on sleep, Mayor.
Very good.
Uh, some of it's already been discussed. We met on March third. We discussed annulation of the additional land for the industrial park. Mike talked about it a little while ago. Uh, we had a draft ordinance on adopting new building codes pending additional review. That was discussed. Leonard Wood Institute, that, uh, sustainable, all of our partnership update by Bruce. Uh, do you want to add anything? Do you wanna add anything to what's there, Bruce?
Well, I think I've highlighted a lot of that. One of the things I did mention before is we're looking at that defense community infrastructure program grant.
And there was some research on telecommunication tower regulations. And we're working on possible ordinance. Economic Development issues, business spotlight. Well, we've already presented the awards on that tonight, along note. Also mentioned is Ziegelnstein Feet and Farm for the month of April, if we have an April meeting, which I hope we do. And then followed by Odyssey Scuba for the month of May.
Very good.
And pretty much our other special events look like they're gonna be casted. The Easter egg hunt that we've discussed earlier. Not certain about the kids day in the park, maybe you or the mayor, you or Mr. Harold.
We'll probably wait a little while and see what develops, right Sean, would you say? Bruce, would you say?
Yes.
Anyway, we, we had a need for a closed session. We went into that at five ten and we came out of closed session at five forty-three and we adjourned.
Okay, very good, questions for Bill? Okay, I probably am doing this wrong again, but I'm gonna go ahead and do it under economic development. I have actually been here talking on text with one of our business owners downtown and there has been discussion, I think I had passed that on to Mr. Harold. But I wanna say this to the city council and maybe there is something we can do during this time, just during this time. I have two businesses that have asked for a designated parking place in front of their business. On the south side, you'd only need one because now we've got the new tack room and we've got hoppers and we've got the quarti, so they could use one. And simply put up some signs that say pickup spot only for pickup of carryout goods. And of course, very important to some of these people. That's how they intend to do business for a while. And so I, again, I, maybe Bruce just get a consensus of the city council and we'll, we'll talk about it.
Mayor, I, I recommend that we may consider that a part of our state of emergency ordinance. If the, if the, you know, city council agrees when we adopt this ordinance, one of the actions we can undertake, it has some rather broad powers that we could take in the event of emergency and I, I think that we could, we could adapt that and use that for those purposes.
Very good, that's great.
Excellent idea.
Okay, very good, very good. So I think that'll assure, reassure some of the people. And I think downtown's really the only place we need it, would you agree?
To my knowledge, yes.
For example, if Price Cutter were to close, there would be plenty of places to park. I think there's plenty of places to park at McDonald's, that kinda thing, so. Okay, very good, thank you. We have some other business tonight and the first one is what Mr. Harold just brought up. And I do notice in the audience is our fire chief, Doug Urico is in the audience. And we're glad to see you Doug, we know that you are working hard right now. But we have a declaration of a state of emergency. Mr. Harold, would you address that?
Yes, Mayor, I think this is a necessary action. Of course, we're concerned to, about the coronavirus and doing what we can to prevent the spread in the city of Waynesville. And we've come up with a rather detailed plan, which I've, you know, of course I reviewed with you and the city council. And the goal, the goal here is to promote public and employee health. And at the same time, as the mayor's mentioned, we've gotta continue to provide critical city services to our citizens and to the city. And our critical services, we have to keep the electric going, the water going, the sewer, the sewer, keep our roads going and, and of course, emergency service with our police and of course, Doug's here with your fire department. So we've gotta keep our emergency services going and our utilities going as well. We've come up with a plan where we'll have work crews on different shifts. Basically working six, covering, covering the city six days a week, of course, on call on, on Sundays. This plan also details that we will amend our budget. We're gonna put some money under contingency, we're gonna authorize two hundred thousand dollars for contingency purposes if we need to address some emergencies during this period. Hopefully we will not need to use a fraction of those funds, but that money would stand available if we needed to. You know, there's, there has been a few emergency purchases that we've had, we've had to make. Some of the actions that we're gonna undertake and we're gonna go in more detail, we're gonna look to close our lobby. But we're gonna be open for appointments and there's many ways that we can serve our, the citizens of the city. You know, they can email questions, they can make an appointment with us and we'll be glad to open lobby. We're just trying to reduce the social, reduce the social contact and the likelihood of, of spreading, spreading the virus. So, you know, we'll put out some, some of these forums on the, on our Facebook page and out over the internet. Of course, many things that we're gonna follow, there's a lot of state and federal guidelines we're gonna be following and enforcing. We regret that some of these things are gonna inconvenience our public. We may have to close our playground and other facilities like that to prevent the spread of the virus. Some of these things are gonna be inconvenient, we regret that, regret that. But we see as a necessary part to protect the public. Mayor, I'd be glad to answer any questions. I know you, you and the council were given a rather detailed update of, of the actions that were undertaken.
And I would say to the mamas and daddies out there that we do, Lawrence, we do hate to close playgrounds. But everybody would, if you think about it, it's the worst place to be. And I think all of us realize that. And so it's probably gonna be closed. We cannot disinfect that and keep it good for the public. Something that was brought up later by, or earlier by some of our council people is that we welcome you to come and walk on our walking trail. That's what that's for, you need to get outside. Kids need to get outside, you just don't wanna be in groups. So please use our walking trail and our outdoor facilities, except when it involves a group. And we're gonna discourage that.
Mayor, one other item, we are going to ask you to authorize the suspension of water shut-offs at the current time. You know, that's very important that they continue to have a clean water delivered to their house.
And that's in here, correct, F?
Yes, that would authorize, under, under that item, we could authorize that suspension of.
Is that electric also?
I think we're gonna work on a one-on-one basis with, with the people on electric and make payment arrangements.
Right. But you'll have to call, so, you know, we're not saying you don't have to pay your bill. You do have to pay your bill, but we understand the hardships.
To make payment arrangements.
Okay, so again, we have discussed this at length as, as a council. And so I, I think at this time, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Mike Curtis and second by Clarence.
Mayor, I think we need to have a reading.
Oh, I apologize, I apologize. Ordinance number twenty-four fourteen and I apologize, Mr. Doyle.
Ordinance number twenty-four fourteen and ordinance authorizing the mayor to declare a state of emergency arising from the imminent threat of the spread of the twenty nineteen novel coronavirus COVID nineteen fixing an effective date. Ordinance number twenty-four fourteen and ordinance authorizing the mayor to declare a state of emergency arising from the imminent threat of the spread of the twenty nineteen novel coronavirus COVID nineteen fixing an effective date.
Very good, I have a motion from Mike Curtis, a second from Clarence Liberty. And are there any other comments? Madam Clerk, what'd you call the roll for this important ordinance?
Councilman France.
Yes.
Councilman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Very good, that ordinance passes and we do have a declaration of emergency for the city of Waynesville. Okay, and we also have an appointment to the board of adjustments. And I want you to do this, Mr. Harold. The board of adjustments, when I was on planning and zoning, for example, I kinda knew what that was. But what would be some examples of board adjustments? Somebody appealing?
Yes, Mayor, if, if a builder wants to appeal a building code, you know, or a, some of the restrictions on the planning and zoning rules, like if they wanna place their lot closer to the street than the ordinance allows, you know, they can, they can appeal some of those decisions to the board of adjustments. And we may have a couple of decisions that a builder might want to come to the board of adjustment to appeal the building code decisions.
And I thought it was interesting when I asked you about, we have people on here from Richland and I said, you know, I, I wondered about that and you had a great response.
Yes, we have, I believe we have a gentleman who teaches the building trades in Waynesville.
Yes.
That he may happen to live in Richland, but he's very knowledgeable about construction, construction. I think we have a gentleman that works in Saint Robert on building codes, but he, you know, so he's not in our city limits. But it is typical for the board of adjustments in another city I worked on, we had board adjustment members in Springfield and Rolla.
Wow.
You know, so they were, you know, and some of them were architects and people who had experience with the building trades. We do have some that live in Mr. York, I believe he lives in Crocker, but he's an electrician. So he understands electrical side. Mr. Dunbar, he's, he's not a builder, but he's got a legal background and understands that. And I think Aaron Burt is a local, he's worked on a few houses himself in, in our area. So I think we have a good cross-section of very experienced people that are knowledgeable in the building trades and understand planning and zoning concepts and also the building trades.
And I made the comment that, for the public, I would say this, that this group of people, I think they're all men, that these, this group of men literally give us an objective look at appeals and, and questions that we might have. So tonight, council, I would give you as a group, can I do that? I can do a group, can I?
I believe you, I believe you could, Mayor.
I can. I would like to offer as a group these appointments. Bruce Harold, Mike Dunbar, Chris York, Aaron Burt, Jerome Gordon and Clinton Jarrett, an old student. And those are staggered appointments. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four and then Clinton will serve until twenty-five.
And Mayor, I just wanna clarify, I'm an administrative officer, I'm not, I kinda represent the city in that action. I do not actually vote on the board of adjustments.
Very good. Okay, and I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Clarence. Second by Cecil. Do we need a roll call vote?
I think we can, I, I believe we can just.
Okay, all of those in favor? That's unanimous?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Bruce, since you're the only one known there representing the city, do we need to appoint a backup to you as Mr. Doyle or Mr. McDonald? So that if you're not there, cause I mean, you're looking at retiring in the next four months.
We'll need to update this and I recommend that, that, that become Mr. Doyle. We will have other staff that will attend the meeting to discuss it. I think the natural update right now would be a chain of command, it'd be myself, Mr. Doyle and then, and then Mitch McDonald would be the chain of command. If I was not able to make that meeting, that would be our chain of command.
And I think that when the new administration comes on board, we always renew all those things anyway and that would be something that you would just renew.
Yes.
Okay, so good point, Mike.
Good point, yes.
Moving along here, guys, we have the city administrator report.
Hey Mayor, a lot of things we've already covered, got a few high points. We've, our income for the first two months of the year has been good. But I'd be remiss in stating that we're gonna have a lot of bond payments coming out in the next month or two, which will take our balances down, but we should still be in good shape. I'm proud of a lot of the electrical work, the, the electric department's done in our park. We're relocating lines that cross our park to bordering areas around our park. Of course, we did take down some trees, but all those trees, I understand were dead that they took down. So we're gonna be in the process, of course, planting some more trees. The water department did a lot of work at a North Street Lift Station and we saved, by doing that in-house, we saved the city thousands of dollars by installing new pumps and support railing and plumbing there. Of course, we're ordering materials and Amber and Miriam have been instrumental in our grant paperwork and we're in the process of ordering the materials now and we're gonna start that process soon. The SCADA system, we, we started to work on installing the SCADA system. We've been having some problems with getting contractors down here to work on many of our items due to the outbreak of the virus and some travel plans have been reduced with a lot of our contractors. That's some of the, that's some of the highlights, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody? Okay, we have council comments, let's start down here with Bill.
Well, I've got a lot of things to say, none of it's for here, so I'll pass.
Thank you for that, Bill. Cecil?
I just wanna say that we just declared or authorized the mayor to sign the state of emergency. It's gonna be hard for a long time, probably two to three months. You have to remember that a lot of people are gonna be talking and go, well, what, what's the reason for this? Or what's the reason for that? There's no coronavirus cases in Waynesville or, you know, vice versa, there's none on the post yet. But we have to remember that these are preventative measures, we're trying to prevent something. So if we steer right on preventative measures, we may never get a virus or a super spread of the virus within the city because we're trying to prevent it. So if nothing happens and we do all this for nothing, then we did what was expected, we prevented it. So that's all I wanna say.
Exactly. Sean? And Sean, by the way, we may have to order you a new shirt.
Oh, yeah.
Have y'all kinda noticed that Sean's lost a lot of weight? So we might have to give him another shirt and save that for the next big guy. Sean?
We'll, we'll use it for flood recovery. But I would just say just to continue to follow suit with the guidance that's been set forth by the local, the local government authorities and just be mindful of one another, continue to check on one another, be respectful of each other's property. And then one other thing is that crosswalks are not optional. To stop if someone is crossing the street, if they're standing at a crosswalk, where to stop and allow them to cross the street. Once they're completely left the crosswalk, then you continue to travel. I was crossing a street out here downtown Waynesville, five cars passed me until I just stepped out there. I mean, that's probably not the right way to do it, but I did it because we're supposed to stop. I don't know, maybe it's, they just stop for women, maybe I just look like I can handle myself, but. It's for everyone, male or female, no matter how tall or big you may be. Just, just, just kinda be courteous for, for others and be mindful. I know everybody's kinda going back and forth with this coronavirus thing. But just kinda keep your, your mind straight, be respectful and continue to trust what, what the city is, is doing because we have the best interests of the community in mind.
Very good, Mike?
Hebrews ten twenty-four states that we are to spur each other on in love and good deeds. We need that right now. I was thinking about neighbors and my wife and I went through the neighborhood, elderly people and offering to go get them groceries. We need a lot of people to do that. Also, you need to step back, if you're one of those people that panic, it's probably a sign of selfishness. So step back, don't panic, just love one another.
Nice. Nice, lightened mic. Jared?
No comment tonight.
Clarence?
I'd like to thank Mr. Harold and his staff for all the work they put in for precautionary measures for the virus. Thank you for all the employees of the city. And everybody, please be careful, practice the precautionary measures.
Very good, Ed?
I'd say look out for the elderly, but someone reminds me earlier this evening.
Sorry!
Elderly. But I'm looking out for you, Ed. It's not even a snowplow anymore. I don't, I do not understand that people are hoarding toilet paper and milk and everything else. I should look out for other people, be safe.
Very good, Mike?
No, just keep an eye out.
Very good.
Protect yourself and if you even have the slightest idea, don't expose other people. Get checked appropriately and then do what you're supposed to do as a human being.
Very good. I would, and in fact, it's on Facebook, but it has been announced by the media. We do have a confirmed case of COVID nineteen in the county. And so it is very important for us to be aware of other people. And I realize we're having a public meeting tonight, but again, we are very mindful of each other and we're mindful of what's going on here. And we're mindful of what's going on here. I'm going to end with this. Of course, I'm a Facebooker, and so I got up this morning, and this was on my mind, and I had a lot of comments on it, and I thought I'd share it with you. I said this morning, as the problems mount each day, I hope this generation will rise to the level of my parents. They were the greatest generations. They had the Depression and World War Two. And today, every day, we add another level of worrying. But also, a friend reminded me of some good history, and I'm quoting her. She said, "That same generation was flagpole setting and swallowing goldfish just a few years before they rose to the occasion." Because you get so many people saying bad things about the kids today. Well, most of them are just kids. And the same thing was true in World War Two. The strength of character of the greatest generation was honed by the difficulties they faced. And I would say to the young people, be leaders, because this is your challenge.
That's right.
And thank you, everybody.